No, they're limited to special protections only to make a special workshop. She needs. Yeah, too big. Did you see? Did you see how the manager was in one of them? And she's. She doesn't pay attention. That's what I said, okay. This is why we need a C R I board. Five, six years ago. Never should have been carried out. If it wasn't done, then it shouldn't be carried out. That's right. Are you willing to talk about this? This is what staff ought to be doing.
I'm just wondering if I have a problem with it. This was back when I was trying to do it. So if I'm going to tell them what it is, then I'm right to tell them. Listen, that's illegal. See, it's, 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 that's a state of law. You don't know where, do you believe that there's an issue? Do you believe the last, that's an American, do you believe it? Do you, yes or no?
Oh, okay, now that explains everything. I, I know where you're coming from. You're gonna find out there is. Now, now you made this so clear. You're gonna find out, you're gonna find out. The other two social.
Oh, okay. It's about to take over America.
You're all gonna find out how long it will take. George Bush, who was the president, and the vice president, the owner of that, they got arrested. Who made it happen?
Well, I was so embarrassed to tell you that I could read it up. I asked him, and he said, "I didn't know."
One, 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 one. I commented. Yeah, I commented. I'm a nine eleven. Everything is good. So, do you think that's an answer? It was scary, right? For a stage, right?
Well, they have a spot for some of the Americans on the conference.
Yeah, I hope the spots don't give you money by August.
Michelle, you put up these structures, okay? I, I can put these people forward.
Okay, you're gonna surround that. I, I remember everyone. Look, y'all were fooling me, okay? Well, I think y'all were coming for that. Sorry, it's not like.
We're gonna be starting in a minute. Please look at these monitors. These are some of our instructions. In them, there's something. Okay, call to order. This city of Dan Allen. City council meeting. February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. There is now approximately six p.m. Please take note, this meeting is starting thirty minutes late because of an overrun of the C R meeting, which was previous two thousand. Okay, call to, uh, call of order.
Call, call.
Yes.
Mayor White.
President.
Vice Mayor Henshaw. I'm here. Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Lyons.
Here.
Councilwoman Kovach.
Present.
Mandy Oden, city clerk.
Here.
Troy Slattery, public works manager.
Here.
Jan Smith, finance officer.
Here.
Georgina, city community development manager.
Here.
Julie Janowski, records clerk.
Here.
Chief of Police Department.
Here.
Lieutenant Doc, police department.
Here.
Corporal Raines, police department.
Here.
Andrew Gann, reporting in progress.
I'm here.
Okay, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all please remain standing if there are anyone that's pending this meeting that would like to, uh, say a prayer or any words of inspiration?
I'd like to make a prayer.
Okay, yes, sir.
I, I, I want to make a prayer that what I'm about to say, um, goes viral all over the internet and the world knows the truth about what happened in D.C. and everything you're being lied to by all of the media. I'm the one who has the truth. I'm the Snowden that they've been talking about in the news. And in my three minutes, I'm praying to God that this goes viral and I get everyone's participation in helping it go viral with your phones. In the name of the Lord Jesus, amen.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, everyone can be seated. Okay, Ms. Roberts. Anything else?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, the City Hall Board and Board on Thursday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Very good, thank you. Any council comments regarding the agenda as it's published?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please make note, no comments. Now we're to public comment on non-agenda items. You will be limited to three minutes. What this simply means is if it's on the agenda, you want to speak to it, wait till we get to it. But if you want to speak about anything that's not on the agenda, something new, something from the past, something you want to tell us about, this is, this is the time to do it. So this is for items that are not on the agenda. You will have a chance to speak to the agenda items as we approach them. Ms. Odom, anyone signed up to speak? Is there anyone who hasn't signed up that has, still would like to speak?
Um, I didn't sign anything. Where was I supposed to sign?
Yes, sir, you can come on up. Please give us your name and address. You have three minutes.
Name and address?
Name and address and you have three minutes.
Okay.
My name is Michael Garston. Uh, my address is one, three, two, nine, one, southeast, uh, one hundred and first place, Dunellen, Florida, three, four, four, three, one. Uh, did, did I start now or what?
Pull your, pull the mic up a little bit so you don't have to run down.
Um, I'm.
Just pull the, pull the arm, the arm, that's enough. There you go.
I'm making a request for everybody's participation to take your phone out and record me because this needs to be a viral video. Would anybody like to record me and, and get this to go viral? I guess not. Well, 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 I need to talk to everybody because everybody's an American here. Um, you, 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 okay, I'm talking to everyone, not just you. You're an American. I already reached the thirty minutes, thirty seconds.
No, we'll start over if we have to face the council.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking to everybody, not just you. Uh, so do I get my, my three minutes back?
Yeah, you have your three minutes back, please.
I'd like participation, please. Would you help me with your phones? It has to go viral. Thank you very much. Um, okay, I got my three minutes. Um, I'm, I, I, I was predicted, uh, predicted by the prophet Kim Klamet, February, February twenty-second, two, two thousand and fourteen, what I was gonna do at the nation's capital. You're being lied to right now. Trump is already on his second term. I spoke to him across the street in, 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 um, in, in the Dunkin' Donuts. I'm the one who told him he's got no going at this. I'm the one that caused everything that happened from one, from, from fifty people to ten thousand for the mandates. Uh, Alex Jones was not there. He was not in the breach and the people in the government need to stop covering for him. Marjorie Taylor Greene needs to stop covering for Alex Jones. He, he was not there. Um, President Trump, I know that you didn't take that shot. I already know you didn't take that shot. Uh, everybody needs to stop lying. Everyone in the government needs to stop lying. And that's, that's what I'm here to tell you. I am the Snowden. I am the whistleblower. I'm the one who was anointed by God the minute I was born to take down J six. I'm the one that gave Tucker Carlson and everybody all that ammo that they're using right now. And I have not even gotten a thank you from this whole town. Your precious Trump would not be coming back if it wasn't for me. Do you understand that? Do I even get a thank you? I'm the one that caused the pandemonium in the White House happening right now. Does anyone want to thank me? Nope. I don't need a thank you. I'm telling you the truth. Because you don't know what, uh, what, what went on in D.C. Me and those cops are the only ones that know. And I already spoke with them in D.C. They're on my side. They're on my side. They're on the, with the people's side. We're the boss. We are the boss, not you. Do you understand? We're the boss. That's all I gotta say. I'm, this is my First Amendment right to yell and get my point across. That's what Thomas Jefferson would have done. You understand? I'm a real American. I stood up in this country while everybody stuck their tail in their, in their, you know what? I'm the one that caused it all. That was anointed by Jesus. We're gonna get our country back. Seventeen seventy-six, blue rise again. You understand, Trump? We're the boss. We are the boss. Amen.
That's it. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Julie?
Mandy, if you could, if you could, just make it. Oh, super, thanks.
Good boy.
I just want to make sure this is the right spot.
Sit. Good boy. Julie, wait, wait till the podium is cleared, please. Okay, Julie, rearrange that microphone so we can hear you.
All right, how's that? Julian Mendonza, eleven, eight, nine, forty East Blue Cove Drive. And, um, I wanted to use my time to ask the council, um, along with, uh, staff and residents, beautification committee, all. Um, I'm hoping we can develop a plan for proactive code enforcement, um, to clean up the current signage in town before we spend money on new ones. Um, here's my slides. So this is between my house and Blue Cove and, uh, it's less than two miles down to the Walmart. So, you know, I know that we all, a lot of us live here. Hopefully, all of us are driving through the town. This, um, spray painted sign is at a residence. Um, you know, just non-encode, not, not really attractive. Next, again, signs in the weeds, double signs, signs that are posted real close to each other that say the same thing. Um, the psychic reader sign, uh, there's about five of those right on the corner at Walgreens. So these are all out of city code. Next, 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 next. Here, um, you know, I really appreciate today that two of these were moved. Um, I, it was my feeling, maybe my opinion, that three electronic message signs on forty-one in less than a half a mile, um, one of them not working. It wasn't really effective. This weekend, as I drove by, I noticed that it was, um, advertising an expired event at the library. Next. Next slide. Oh, thanks. So I know that some of the signage in town is not always the purview of the city. So my proposal is that working together with businesses, uh, we can achieve even more. So let's go next. I've outreach to Wendy's because I think that there's a lot of improvements that could be made in their signage. So I'm waiting to hear, to hear back from local and corporate. On the left, again, those are the Wendy's signs, we're only collected. We've got signs blowing in the wind there on the right. Next. Um, this, I mean, I wrote the sign. This is double sign, hand painted on vinyl siding. And I wrote it just because of the absurdity of it. I hope people adopt dogs and don't shop for dogs. But this is a sign that, you know, hopefully, we can get taken care of. Next. Uh, we got signs from, you know, maybe cities or businesses that are just kind of laying around, signs that you can't read. Next, lots of predatory lending banners. Maybe they're legally located, but, you know, there's like three or four right in one area. I love this one because it's being monitored by the sheriff's office, you know, trespassing. Next, next. Uh, I'm not sure if the one on the left is a sign or not. It's the produce stand, but it's not very attractive and gotta get them gone. I love that because I think we gotta get them gone, all these signs in town. Next. So I'm just asking that, uh, the council, a council member makes a motion to put code enforcement as a standing monthly workshop or agenda item so that the citizens can be informed. We can't move forward with these signs until we clean up what we have. And, uh, it can be a team effort of the council, the staff, and the beautification committee. Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak to a non-agenda item? I understand we have some, uh, guests in the house that were wanting to speak to us. A glass company, sign something, company, is that correct? Uh, you're not on the agenda. So now's the time, if you come up, you can, you know, try to keep it within three minutes if you can. Hey, name and address. Hey, how you?
Hi, um, I'm Glenna. This is my wife Cathy and her last name is Palhoff. And we live on fifty-eighty-six North Citrus Avenue. It's in Crystal River. We belong to the Chamber here in Dunellen. And we try to do a lot of, um, help for volunteering, uh, projects that they're involved with. Um, we also do lettering and printing, um, signs. We do laser engraving, so we're a multifaceted company. We brought a couple samples, um, but we had, we did this on the fly because of the limited time. I can see the city does need some help and that young lady's brought to, uh, attention. That's pretty interesting. Um, I know in, in Citrus County, they have a truck that just goes around and pil, picks up all those signs. That's all they do, nothing but that. Um, but I brought a couple samples. If you would like me to display them, I will.
Sure, please.
Okay, I'll just use this wall here. This just gives ideas of styles of work we do. I do, I work for the county. I do dimensional work. We cut out, with a big laser, we cut out the lettering and do dimensional for signage. That's for more interior. We wouldn't put this on the outside because everybody will say they're a tax collector and take a sample. This is a material that's aluminum and it's printed on. This is pretty standard. This is a material that's a waterproof aluminum. It can be weather resistant. Done a lot of work for the city in Crystal River with these signs for the manatees. Um, so it's, this was a little humor for one of the ladies.
Could you just give us a general idea what the prices would be on various signs you're showing us?
This material and for square footage. Well, if we do nesting for signs, we will find that, um, the printing takes about eight dollars to eight dollars and fifty cents a square foot for the ink and the print paper.
Yeah. Probably be twenty-two and twenty-eight dollars.
So that sign right there would be about fifty dollars?
No. No, twenty-two to twenty-eight dollars.
I thought, so that's the printing cost and there's no?
And that's for the material.
Okay.
I can pass this around if you want.
And it's one-sided?
Well, I can do double, but of course, you, when you print, you're gonna use more, uh, ink, right?
Waterproof. So what would it be if it was double?
Maybe thirty dollars.
Okay.
And also, if in your projects that you're putting together, um, you don't need to, uh, have it all done at once in one, say, okay, we need to allot this much money. You can do it in pieces as you're going along. Um, we've done, used to do a lot of churches with the stained glass windows. Put them on a budget and they were able to afford it. We can see the city needs that allotment. I was seeing your budget and I can see we're working along with you. It'd be a pleasure. So I know I've just run out of time.
Well, we'll give you another minute, please.
Okay. So has anybody got any questions?
Well, I mean, Georgina, do you want to kind of ask them of like what your, what kind of signs you're thinking about?
I would have to show them what I have and see if they're.
So, so maybe we could get y'all to have a meeting one day and then have a presentation come back to us?
And it might be good for some of the members to actually come to our shop. Might be delightfully surprised at what they see there.
I think Vice Mayor is making an excellent suggestion that you contact Mandy and ask for time to come in and talk with Mandy and Georgina.
Okay.
And then they'll kind of put together some ideas and then maybe you can come back next month and we'll give you.
Okay.
You'll be on the agenda.
Fifteen minutes or so.
And we'll give you the time you need to make a proper presentation.
And I just say, Bridget Henley, she's part of the Citrus Hartley. We are, she said she'd be in, I talked to her about it for the, the, uh, village of the, you know, the antiquity area. So she said I'd be right in there with it on design.
Wonderful.
So I think it's a joint effort.
That was fabulous.
All right, so we'll be meeting, we'll be meeting the first part of March. So arrange a meeting with staff and then staff can get you on the agenda. Uh, you, you need to be on the agenda, what is it, five days before the meeting?
I'll go ahead and reserve a spot, though. I just need to get all their.
Okay, very good. You're, you're.
Just let us know what you need for us to bring or. Okay.
And, and, um. Just explain. Anyway, she's getting Georgina's business card.
Okay, and we will share ours with, here's Cathy, won't you pass some around? And also, I noticed on your bricks, there was an item there. I just bought a new laser and we just got it running. It will engrave the bricks. It just went right through wood. So it may be another help for you.
That's amazing, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're a great source.
We're looking forward to you coming back.
If I could add to that, please? Um, when they come back to, um, uh, meet with staff, that Troy, uh, be there and also perhaps someone, uh, from the Historic District Board?
Well, well, let's get the, the basics first and then they can get a historic. I mean, this is, this will just be a, what we're thinking and then historic and.
It might be good to have them there for one person, keep the committee small.
Well, we're gonna put that under the purview of staff to decide how they want to handle this. There are certain things staff, uh, can do and then they can report. If council is not satisfied with the quality of the report, we can send staff back and say, do what you need to do. So, uh, I, I think, I think you got it heading in the right direction as far as getting your time. Yes, Miss Kenny?
I just a question for the gentleman. Do you do sand casting also? You do sanding?
We look like a bad resume.
They're actually pretty good. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all for sitting to the meeting and happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah, thank you.
Now take your beautiful bride out for dinner.
I already, I already got my roses. I've been giving them out to everybody.
I didn't get any.
And you are a member of the Chamber of Commerce, correct?
Yes, I'm designing the lettering that's gonna go on the building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
There's different styles that we can use, some dimensionalism and some casting.
Okay. All right, sir, we got a good time for us to move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a, uh, public comment on non-agenda items? Ms. Odom, anybody on Zoom? Please make note that the public has had its opportunity to make comment on the non-agenda items. Now we, if you're following us on the agenda, we're at consent agenda. Consent agenda is where council, after public comment, will vote to pass items one, two, three, all at one time. These are items that we've already discussed thoroughly at a workshop and there was a consensus on these items. So if you'll quickly look at items one, two, three, if there's anyone in the public that would like to make comment on any of these consent agenda items, now's your chance. Anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak to the consent agenda? Pam?
I move the consent agenda to be approved as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion by council? Call to vote, all in. Call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passed. Unanimous. Okay. Now we've done one, two, and three on the agenda. With that one vote, we're at number four. Is Ashley Gray in the audience?
Um, Ashley, she called a few minutes before the meeting because her, her husband had a car accident, so she couldn't make it. She expressed her apologies for not being here and she will call back to reschedule.
Pass on our good wishes.
Will do. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we'll reschedule for March possibly? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. So we just postponed item number four. Now we're at number five, recognition of Historic Preservation and Planning Commission Board members. This was a suggestion by Vice Mayor Hancher. We have some certificates to hand out to our preservation and board and our commissions. Vice Mayor, would you like to be with me and hand these out?
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you.
This is a certificate of appreciation. This certificate to run the article, to have a long-term chair of the planning commission. Another member on our planning commission is actually a newer member and has many great divisions of planning commission. We don't know who this person is. We've tried to find him, but we have someone here that we're giving a certificate of appreciation to. It's a lady called Kathy Dunn.
She loves.
I didn't know that. Another one, I don't see her in the audience, that has been a long time member of the planning commission and has been involved with the city for as long as anybody can remember. Mary Ann. Another person who's been on our planning commission now for over a year, John Kirkland. And another member who was on the planning commission who, her term expired on the planning commission and she very soon saw when we needed, when we had an opening, even though she had opened last, like she had served her time, she had decided to come in back and serve again. So I want to thank everybody for the planning commission. It's very important to see. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. I'd like to call Jane Myers. She's been in our work forever. Any wish I may make? I'm sorry. You fired us a bit. Well, thank you so much. Not here? Not here? Ms. Jenke, always and forever.
No problem. I like the scenes.
Mr. Wilson Martin? Thank you for your service. Appreciate it very much. Thank you for coming. And Mokar? Mokar? Okay. Anyway, thank you all for volunteering. As a junior league president and volunteer, I know what it takes to volunteer and it's just amazing that y'all all come out to it. And I've been on the planning zone and for the government and been a part of the head of our city council, so thank you all for being a part of the city and making us great. Very, very much.
Now we move to item number six on the agenda for the fiscal year 2021-2022, first quarter general fund budget update. Oh, boy. Sounds like fun.
Boy, geez. It is.
You're the only one in the room that smiles. Okay, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff has told me that I have three minutes. Two minutes, three minutes, start at the clock. Thank you. I'm going to present the first quarter of our general fund budget update and that is the results as of December 31st. Mandy, if you'll go to the next schedule? Thank you. And this first schedule is a picture of our revenues and there we go. Year-to-date actuals, again, as of December 31st, we've received one point, almost $1.2 million. A big portion of this amount is attributed to a federal grant we have received from the Treasury Department for the American Rescue Plan Act. Congress voted to provide cities and counties with money to basically rebuild America. It was initially looked at that this, these monies would be used for stormwater. I'm sure we'll still have further discussion, but we've received our first distribution of $460,000. Our next distribution will come in the next fiscal year. It's over a 24-month period and we have six years to actually spend the money. Four years to obligate it, six years to spend it. So there is time for planning. Percentage-wise, we've received 28, in total, 28% of our revenues as of December 31st. And that's about in line. We're one quarter of the way through. We've received about one quarter of our revenues. I am projecting because of the ARPA funds that we will have more revenue than budgeted by about the $460,000. At this point in time, we project budget because it's really too early. I'm not aware of any, any project or anything that we absolutely won't be spending money on. And as time goes on, that will be adjusted as we know more of what our budget is going to look like by the end of the year. The prior year actuals are unaudited. This is what we have in our financial system and we'll have our audit report sometime early May, most likely. Are there any questions? I've highlighted just a couple things. I might as well go over them. The charges for services, which is this line right here, it's less than budget. Budget is 84.26. I'm projecting less. This is just due to a lag in cemetery sales at this point in time. That doesn't mean we won't come in over budget, but based on what I see at this point in time, we will come in under budget. The next item, which is public safety, it's just a bit of a lag due to fire safety inspections. As far as the fines and forfeitures, which are our police department revenues, this is all based on citations issued. And as of December, we're right, I'm projecting right about budget. Miscellaneous will come in just about budget. It's a little greater because included in this amount are donations to the police department for their children's programs at Christmas time. So there were a couple thousand dollars that was donated. This last line is for capital projects. It's monies that we bring in from reserves to fund our capital projects that we don't have new money available. So we have a budget, a revenue budget ending at about $4.6 million versus what we did budget of close to $4.2 million. Again, mostly because of the American Rescue Plan grant. Are there any questions?
Question I'd have, Ms. Smith, is generally, how much more adverlorum taxes do you predict we would get this year compared to last year based on the increasing value of property?
About $4,000 more.
$4,000?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that. About $43,000 total, but a portion of that goes to CRA. So as you can see, the very first line, taxes we brought in in last year, $2,061,000. This year, we've budgeted $2,065,000.
So the adverlorum taxes includes the residents and businesses?
Oh, yes, sir. All citywide.
It's really a figure that's hard to understand with how much property values have gone up.
They've gone up, but, but the city of Dunellen.
And we're only getting $43,000 worth.
The city, the city's properties did not increase at the same rate as the rest of the county. We have not had the same level of growth or development as the county has. So our revenues, our, our property values only increased at about 4.8% versus the county's 9%.
Gotcha.
But the county, also the equestrian center, its, its properties fully developed as of January 1st. So anything in the works isn't included.
And just real quick, if, and correct me, Andrew, if I'm wrong, but if I own my home that I have 23 years, the county, there's a set limit that they can't go up more than so much per year. Even though my house might now, if I were to go sell, and I am still making up a number, let's just say it's now worth a million dollars and I paid $100,000 for it 23 years ago. Even though it might be worth a million today, the county can only go up by X amount of dollars or percentage.
That's the Save Our Homes clause?
Yes.
That was adopted, I'm not even sure how long ago that was. But you're, you're correct. Anybody that's been homesteaded for quite a period of time, it can't increase plus the additional exemptions that have come into play. You get an additional exemption for, and I'd have to really look at my notes, between $100 and $150,000, you get an additional $50,000 exemption. Then there's a third one from $150,000, I think maybe to $200,000. Again, I'd have to really look at, at the thresholds. So all that taken into consideration, our taxes, we only realized about $43,000 more this year than last year.
But you're right, Mr. Mayor, because like I sold a house last year to a girl for, I don't know, $148,000 or whatever it was. Well, the people who previously had it, had it, the county had it appraised at like $80,000, but because she had bought it at the $148,000, her taxes doubled. I got that phone call. So, so those kind of things raise your taxes, but not if you and I have lived in our homes for X amount of years.
I mean, you talk about taxes doubling, that's taxes countywide. It's not just city of Dunellen's piece. Because you've got your school taxes, you've got your non-adverlorum taxes within your total tax bill. And Dunellen is only a, a small piece of that.
Right. I think that's a very important factor for the public to understand that we're feeling pressure, inflationary pressure to run the city, right?
Yes, sir.
Everybody's talking about that. It's on the news every night. And the amount of pressure that's putting on us because of inflation is not being matched by our ability to increase our tax base for most part. So I think it's real important for the general public to understand that we are really running the city frugally and we might be a model city for everybody else to go by how you can run a city with this much going on with the amount of money we have. It's pretty amazing to me. When I get with the county and I see their budgets for their various departments are surpassing for individual department what we're running the entire city for, it kind of lets you know, you know, what we're doing. So I, I think these things are important to educate the public, you know, whether it is we're dealing with and we're counting our nickels, I'll tell you that, right?
And even Mrs. Dunn, when she spoke about going to, to visit the city of Newberry, even though that's a relatively small city, they have a $42 million budget versus our $4.1 million budget. I haven't looked at their budget, so I don't know where, where all their cash is coming from. But I guess at, at the last meeting, it spoke to their 58-mile city, 58 miles, but only six miles of it is developed. So I'd have to look at their budget to see where their revenues are coming from, but obviously they bring in a lot more money than we do through various.
It's a hard figure to get my arms around.
Yeah, me too. When I heard it was a $42 million budget.
$32.8.
Oh, okay.
And they have $76,000.
They're a lot larger than we are.
How many, what's the population of the city? Anybody know?
I don't know. I thought it was about 10,000 maybe. I don't know if I heard right.
It's a gated subdivisions. The houses are somewhere from $500,000.
There's something going on there.
So anyway.
Okay, continue, Ms. Smith.
We, like I said, we're really right on schedule with how much we've collected so far, quarter of the way done with the year and about a quarter of the way with the revenues that we have on the books. So unless that you have other questions, I'll move on to expenses.
Any additional questions, counsel?
$6,618 is the Newberry population in 2022. So not much bigger than ours.
What's going on there?
Aided subdivisions, houses are $400,000 on.
Sorry. Okay, now on to general fund expenses. And if you could go down a little bit to show the totals? Perfect. Expenses, we're running about 14%. So we're spending slower than the year is moving, partly due to the fact that we don't really start getting the bulk of our revenues until mid to late November is when our tax money starts coming in. So we typically are slower the first quarter of the year and we're really right in line. And, and Mr. Mayor, you said we're conservative? We are very conservative. The departments don't rush out to spend. When they need to spend, it's a process, so it does take time. I am projecting pretty much budget, maybe a little under as far as the expenses go. Again, this is just a picture of a point in time. Some of the reasons in the city clerk department where we record city hall's water and sewer and electricity, it's coming in a little under budget. The police department is just slightly over by about $5,000 and that is due to special detail assignments where the businesses cover the officers' costs and we record that, that expense in the police department. And the revenue, of course, we record it under miscellaneous. So it is just a, an offset. In the, the fire department, there's also a decrease in utility expenses, less than budget, slightly, less than a thousand dollar decrease. In roads and streets, a slight decrease again due to electricity and water and sewer coming in under budget. And the same thing in the park and rec department. It's under budget a little bit. Now, with the increases coming, you know, maybe during the year, that could go up dramatically. But overall, I'm projecting a surplus of about $468,000, pretty much again due to the, the federal GR, ARPA grants, unless we spend it down quite a bit before the end of the year. So we're, we're right in line to really where we should be this time of year. Are there any questions? Thank you. Now, let's move on to. Thank you. Now, let's move on to reserves. And the column you're looking at is right here. This is as of December 31st. Cash on hand, $6.2 million. In our unrestricted, which is our operating account, our checkbook, we have almost $1.7 million. Again, we haven't spent, you know, the money on the projects. We still have personnel and other operating expenses. But this list, what we do have in each of our reserves, we've got funds set aside for our debt service. Our debt service at December 31st is $1,925,000. So we are under the $2 million mark. And we've made one payment out of four. And I'd be happy to address any of the reserves if you have any questions. The one that I typically focus on is our operating reserve. We do have money set aside for emergencies, $681,000.
Set for three months?
That's probably a little more than three months at this point. Our interest earnings are deposited. That's how this fund actually got started. And we don't bring in a lot of interest on a monthly basis, but that's what started our emergency reserve. It was a way to start funding it. And then with the fund balance policy that council adopted a couple of years ago, we were required to set aside a minimum of three months' worth of operating expenses to get us through an emergency.
That's a requirement by the state?
No, that's a requirement by you. The fund balance policy was a, excuse me, a policy that was recommended by our auditors to establish a certain level of reserves. And also another piece of that policy is that the depreciation expense that we record on our books, on our capital assets each year, 10% of that I am tasked with depositing every year into, let me find the reserves, the reserve. Where is it? It's this reserve right here. That's at $136,000. I'm tasked with depositing 10% of our depreciation expense. That's calculated at year-end, depositing it in there. That's a way to add money to that reserve. Because most of these reserves are fixed amounts. They won't grow anymore. So whenever we can, add to them, we absolutely try our best. And then we have some police reserves which are funded through their citations that are issued. There's a portion of a citation goes towards education. A portion goes to what's considered automation, such as computers. And they have a couple of other reserves. This police reserve here is trust equity, is donations that they receive from the citizens. And then there's a forfeiture reserve where if they make an arrest and are able to confiscate the perpetrator's assets, any monies received would go into that reserve. And there are statutory requirements on what these can be spent on. So it's not like we can just dip into any reserve we want. We have to follow statutes or councils direct when these reserves were established.
A comment I have. A lot of times when we look at these figures right underneath the line, the 5509, 6034, it has been interpreted by some people that that is how much money we have in reserves and it's interpreted, that's money we have to spend however we want. That's how much cushion we have for everything.
And that's not correct.
It's important that everyone knows that these figures, even though they're called reserves, there is something that's planned ahead of time with that money. So out of that, let's go to this one right here, Jan. 2021. So it's $6,034.
That's as of November. Okay, 2021 is the 5.5 million.
Okay. And the $1,009, is that the reserves that we have that aren't tied into anything specifically?
No, that's our debt service.
That's our debt service?
That's our loan balance.
So someone, the question everybody wants, and I've asked you many times and you've given me the number, how much money does the city have that's not locked into a specific thing? In other words, what is our money that we have that we can do something with if we need to?
Right here, $1,688,000. Now, it's locked because of you have a budget. So anything that you would spend outside of the budget would come out of here. Or if you amend the budget, if you decide not to do any road maintenance. For lack of a better example, sorry, Troy. That would be money that would stay in here if you decided not to do just maintenance. I'm not talking new roads or resurfacing. I'm talking hot patch. But that is the only reserve that, for lack of a better phrase, you could go willy-nilly.
Stop and it makes it.
Yeah, it has an impact. Everything, every reaction, action has a reaction.
I think this is really important. Go back to that again, Jan. I think it's important for council and citizens to know that we have $1,688,000 there that's not specifically locked into any particular project right now, correct?
That's pretty much correct because projects are typically capital.
All right. So then it's interpreted in discussion that the city has that much money in front of itself. But then when you take into account, we have a $2 million debt that we're paying off, then that negates, right?
It does because-
So when people say we have all this money, if you include our debt that we have, then you can't really say that, you know, we really have. I get it. It's just, it's a political, it's a political argument and it was a strong argument during the last election.
If you look at the debt in total, if you're looking at grand totals, you're correct. We have no money. We're $1.9 million in debt and we've got $1.7 million in debt.
So the political argument from the last election was we have we're a couple million, several million ahead. And the argument against it was, no, we're not, because we have a $2 million debt and we're not. And that was actually a significant argument in the last election.
And that's correct. But if you look at it on a year-to-year basis, because that reserve changes every year, you know, your new adverlorum tax money goes in there and comes out. When you look at it on a year-to-year basis, we only need $175,000 to pay, to cover our debt for the year.
Correct, understood.
Which is what we do. We set aside every month. We, in accounting, set aside roughly about $14,000 and put it in a debt service reserve. And we're mandated to do that by the loan documents. That's down here so that we can pay a quarter every quarter. We have to have a quarter's worth of debt service set aside.
2032. 2032 is the one that should be paid off.
Yes, sir.
Is 0% interest.
Is 0% interest. That's correct.
Excellent. Okay. Any other, more questions, comments? Ms. Smith, continue.
That concludes my presentation. The next one will be for the second quarter in a month or so.
Oh, good.
I know, I thought she meant tonight. So I know I went over, I know I went over three minutes, but it was because of questions. It's council's fault, right?
I would have to say, Ms. Smith, I probably got as much out of tonight's presentation as I've gotten out of any of the previous ones. A lot of things start clicking tonight.
Good.
So you bring it, if you keep dummying it down, I'll eventually figure it out.
Oh, Valerie-ism.
And it's very, it's very difficult to simplify a budget. So anything, it is, it is difficult. I mean, to get to this part that we've got to, it took years for us to get to prepare a schedule like this and not just give you our generated, auto-generated budget document that has thousands of lines.
Thank you so much. All right. Finished?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Okay, everybody, wake up. We're at item number seven. Number seven in the agenda. This is the first reading of ordinance 2022-03, the purchasing policy amendment. Staff is going to describe that and then we'll open it for any public comments if there are any. Mandy, is this yours or possibly Ms. Smith? I don't know.
I can let Jan speak to it, the specifics. This was at your direction, at council's direction at the workshop last week when we presented you with the recommendation to raise the threshold for submitting requirements. And Andrew, you prepared the ordinance that you have before you and I'll let Jan speak to the specifics of the thresholds.
You can see the changes that Andrew made. If you go to line 45, you'll see that he's, that the $15,000 threshold, which was the minimum for us to have to go out to sealed bid, has been removed and that has been increased to $35,000. And you can see that there's a minimum of two written bids or proposals for contractual services for public improvements. The next strike through is for sealed bids, again, for public improvements. Line 58, the threshold has been changed. And this is for the purchase of contractual services not involving public improvements. And for contractual services including leases, again, the $35,000 threshold. Pretty much everything in this section of the code, everything else has stayed the same. We, staff will still come to council for anything $5,000 or greater. This does not give staff authority to go out and spend any money, any more money than we were allowed to before. It makes this a lot easier for us to do business by increasing the threshold. It gives Troy a lot more freedom to be able to move forward with his projects. And I know the shade shelters were used as an example for this. That's a $30,000 project that Troy can move forward with. He doesn't have to go to sealed bid. Have we gone to sealed bid yet? Okay. So we're a little behind the eight ball on that, but going forward, this allows much more flexibility. And we're now in the 21st century, 22nd, 21st century. We've come up and we're more in line with other governmental entities by doing this. Have I covered everything?
Yes. Staff, any questions for, I mean, council, any questions for staff? Before we open it to public comment. Okay, at this time, generally what this is, is rather than going to sealed bid for items that are $15,000 or more, we'll raise that threshold to $35,000. But they still have, in the language, does it say we have to have three quotes? Does it give any?
Well, the $35,000 is sealed bid, but we will still require, just internal policy, we will require three quotes for anything less.
Less than $35,000.
Because staff still needs to do their due diligence and pick the most qualified and what's in the best interest of the city.
So $35,000 is the trigger. So any, a dollar under $35,000 goes to three quotes.
Yes, sir.
It's actually two.
Okay.
Two quotes. Two quotes. If you look at C, one is two.
I thought we had discussed the comfort level of three.
Generally, we get three, maybe four sometimes. Policy is always at two.
Well, that's open, you know, what council may want to say, if you're comfortable with two, when you start getting up 30 or more, if you want to have three. I mean, it's what council feels good about.
I mean, our staff's always made sure they get it in. Usually, I mean, y'all have had a hard time just getting one person to do a bid when we've done sealed bids. So they'll get as many, you know, they've worked with the vendors too, I'm sure, that know where to get the good bids.
Okay, I think this is part of discussion. So before we get into, no, I encouraged it, so I initiate. It's on me. Anyone in the public that would like to comment on this before council discusses it and makes a motion, makes a motion and discusses it? Anyone? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we have a proposed motion. If you look at the bottom of seven, anybody make this motion?
I move ordinance ORD 2022-03 be read by title only.
We have a second. Ms. Kovich, seconds. Okay, now we're into the discussion of how you may want to go about this. Anybody want to make a comment? Ms. Kovich, you've been kind of quiet tonight.
The meeting's not over? Or I have no comment? I said the meeting isn't over yet, but I have no comment.
Okay, very good. Ms. Kenny?
Well, I think I showed some reluctance when this subject came up earlier. But I was given some additional information. Being a little thick-headed and I do have confidence in what, in terms of this ordinance, I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Of course, no. I'm fine.
I have none. Okay, we have a motion, a second, discussion. Mandy, do you have something to read on this before the vote?
Yes, that's, well, that's what you're voting on, is for me to read it by title only.
Okay, please.
We have to vote on it.
Got to vote on it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Pass? It's unanimous?
Ordinance number ORD 2022-03, ordinance of the city of Danellin, Florida, amending bidding and purchasing policies which are supplemental to state law requirements, amending Section 2-381 of the city's Code of Ordinances within its purchasing policy, providing legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
Very good. Okay, are we ready to go to agenda item number eight? No?
We have to do this one. We have to do the second motion. We have to have comment again? Yeah. So I move ordinance ORD 2022-03 be approved.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? No discussion? Bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, Mandy, is now, can we move to the public hearing statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All persons wishing to address the city council, we ask to limit their comments to specific subject, to the specific subject being addressed. Public opinions and input are valued by the council. However, it is required that comments are directed at specific issues rather than personal comments directed toward the council members or staff in order to foster mutual respect between council members and the public. Members of the public in attendance at public forums should listen courteously and attentively to all public discussions before the body and focus on the business at hand. They shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments not germane to the business of the body or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of meetings. to the business of the body, or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of meetings. Members of the public addressing city council and boards or commissions on a specific project or proposal are requested to disclose any personal interest or relationship and any business professional or financial interest with any individual group, project, or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Members of the public should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process.
Thank you very much. Can we do the double now, 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 or do we?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Agenda item number eight, it is now?
707.
707. PM and I closed the regular meeting and opened the public hearing to discuss. Ordinance 2021-4, property rights element comprehensive plan amendment, transmittal CPA 2021-01, posted on the city's website on 2/4/2022, and advertised in the Ellis Star banner. And I believe right now it's, we go to Georgina?
Yes, this is an ordinance that is basically a requirement by the state. They had a Florida statute that requires local governments to adopt and include property rights elements in our comprehensive plan. So therefore, we had to prepare this ordinance to accommodate that and make sure that we have the right of property owner to physically possess and control his or her interest in the property, including easements, leases, and minimal rights. The right of a property owner to use, maintain, develop, and improve his or her property for personal use or for use of any other person, subject to state law and local ordinance. The right of property owner to privacy and to exclude others from the property to protect the owner's possessions and property, and the right of a property owner to dispose his or her property through sale or gift.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, is there any public comment on agenda number, item number eight? Please note, Ms. Odom, there is no public comment. It is now, what's the time, 7?
709.
It is now 709, and I closed the public hearing held to discuss ordinance 2021-04 and reopen the February 14th council meeting. Okay, we move now to agenda item number nine. It's the final reading of ordinance 2021-04, property rights element comprehensive plan. So do we accept public comment on this first, or is this when we get a motion?
So you just had a public hearing and asked for public comment during your public hearing.
Hmm, so we go right to the motion now?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to? Motion to move ordinance 2021-04 be read by title only? We have a second. We have a second. Okay, at this time, is there a discussion or is this public comment, or we're all done with the public comment?
We're all done with public comment.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Okay, bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, passes. Ms. Odom, you read it, correct?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number ORD 2021-04, an ordinance of the city of Danone, Florida, amending the text of the city's comprehensive plan to include a product property rights element as required by general law, providing for transmission, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Very good. Are we finished with nine?
I move ordinance ORD 2021-04 be approved.
We have a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, passes, unanimous. Very good. Okay, Ms. Odom, are we at now on 10?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, council liaison reports and comments. Ms. Covich?
Yeah, I always have a comment.
Sure.
Jim Gissy was recognized, I saw a new Calistar banner by the Danone Little League Association for his $50,000 donation to help with the improvements of the Danone Little League ball fields. And I feel that city council needs to do something to recognize not only Jim, but Brenda Gissy, his wife. If you, if you know the story, apparently Brenda was biking down the, the trail and then biked down the road, San Jose, where the ball fields located, and she stopped and looked at the fields and said, oh my God, things look pretty dilapidated out there. And they were, it was, I guess Adam was out there playing ball or coaching whatever, and she spoke with him. And he said, yes, we have immediate needs. So she went to Jim Gissy, her husband, and said, hey, Jim, how about it? And he said, sure, it's a worthy cause. So I think both Jim and Brenda Gissy need recognition by council for their very generous contribution to help out with the rebuild of the Danone Little League fields.
Anything else under comments? Maybe kick that, kick that around?
What, how about a plaque, something we get in the paper if we invite him or a representative? I know his brother Michael lives here and speaks for Jim often at meetings and so on.
It's my understanding, I'm not, I don't know for sure, but it's my understanding that Mr. Gissy and another person contributed. I don't know if that's true or not. If that is true, if it is true, we ought to make, we got to make sure that.
Check on that, but what was reported in the Riverland News was Jim Gissy.
That's what I saw too, in the Star Tribune.
That's, yeah, and Calistar banner also, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't slight someone.
And, and going to plaques, I would do something very small because if he's like my house, I have some lovely plaques that I do love and I was honored to receive them, please don't get me wrong, but there's only so much ball space for so, I mean, so maybe if it was even like just a cute little baseball bat or a, a ball signed by some kids from, I mean, something, but.
I do know that Jim really likes getting his picture in the paper, so that's, that's.
But, but I'm just saying, you know.
Okay, council, any comments on this? I, I think it's a positive, I think it's a good thing to do, giving him recognition for this.
Ford, do you know anything about all that? I know you've worked with Adam and such, so maybe you can find out the details for us for the respective thank yous.
Yeah, I can make a couple of phone calls tomorrow, get the details, and I'll report back to Mandy and get it back to council.
And I'd just like to reiterate that Jim and Brenda, since it was her prompting. And if you've ever met Brenda, she's, she's a wonderful person.
Ms. Kenny, do you have any, anything to add to the suggestion to recognize Mr. Gissy?
Well, I certainly would be in favor of that. But in terms of Troy getting some additional information to bring to staff seems appropriate.
Ms. Williams?
I don't have a problem with that, I think it was very nice of him.
Yeah, certainly. Vice Mayor?
No, I did my.
So I would think this is something council could just direct staff to take care of this. I don't think this is something we need to, you know, micromanage.
No.
You know, how you.
We'll take care of it.
Right.
And we'll, we'll see if he's available to come to the council meeting next month.
Do, do we need a motion to do something like this? Okay, very good. Anything, very good, the suggestion. Anything else, Ms. Covich?
That, that's about it, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kenny?
No comment, no, nothing.
Ms. Williams?
Ma'am, I would like to ask a question.
Sure.
Excuse me. I saw in my email something from the chamber about a Danone high school needing assistance with, needing donations for their graduation. Here's a letter here, and I asked Mandy if this is something that the council can donate. I don't know.
Doesn't it have to be a public service? It has to be like a public service, a public.
Public purpose.
Purpose.
If it's determined to serve a public purpose, then you can. Andrew, just to bring you up to speed, it's a letter that we received via the chamber, came to Councilwoman Williams, soliciting donations for the Danone High School graduation this year.
But this came from the coordinator, the graduation coordinator at Danone High School, asking for donations. They actually need, this letter says, the, this year's cost is $6,500. And I think they're having, the cost covers the world, it's question center venue.
Live streaming event.
And I was just wondering if that's something the council could donate. Just a question.
Question is, is it, would it be legal for us to do that? And then we'll decide, you know, if we want to do it or not.
I will look to see if that is legal for educational purposes. You know, generally, it's limited to a certain group, but again, we don't want to espouse too much on that, but I think what the most important thing is, is that even if it is legal, there needs to be a, the city needs to know exactly what the money would be used for, and, you know, there being understanding that if it wasn't used for that purpose, it would be given back. So a little bit more specifics would need to be known. I understand it's a graduation ceremony, but we just need a little, knowing a little bit more information, particularly as to what it's going to be used for in that.
We give him that letter?
Sure. It came from the chamber.
Yes, like to see that it's spent the way that, because it will have, it'll be earmarked for a specific purpose, so you just want to have some sort of validation that that's what it was spent on. Exactly.
Silling field.
Yeah, so maybe, you know, some follow-up.
Ms. Williams, what, what sort of donation were they seeking as far as dollar amounts?
It's $6,500 in there, I think. That's a, that's the cost, I think, or I guess any donation would be helpful.
I think they were starting at the highest, like, level of sponsorship was $250, and you got some sort of advertisement in the program, and then at 100, you got some sort of recognition in the program.
I mean, it would be nice for the city of Danone to always help with those types of things, because it is the city of Danone and Danone High School, so. Oh, yeah, always about the kids.
Well, let's, let's discuss this, if Andrew gives us the go on this. $250 is, is what they're looking for, that gives us?
I'm going back to the email mail.
And Jan, what fund would that come out of, the council?
The council contingency.
Council contingency.
And council's budget, I got, I'm sorry, I don't have a budget in front of me, but you do have funds that really came out.
I got you.
And if you're talking $250, I know you still have that in there. Anything more, I'd want to see what the balance is.
And, and the only thing that I would ask, and again, please, I would, if I had the money, I would just stroke a check, but would we be somehow opening ourselves up to if we don't do it for like, I have the Danone Christian School, I mean, are we now playing? I, I just don't want anybody coming back to us saying, well, you, okay, I got the shaking of the head, so that's good. That's all, I just want to make sure that we're not.
I think your concerns are very valid, that once the word gets out that the city will donate to good things, you will get other people.
Oh, and that's fine, I don't ever mind.
No, I'm agreeing with you, you kind of open up the floodgate for, well, how come you gave it to someone so and?
Not giving it to me.
Well, same thing with the movie.
Yeah, why didn't we give it to the soccer?
Well, if something like the high school, I would feel very good about doing something.
Absolutely.
If I may, I'll just read this one section. It says, I'm writing you today to ask for your help. As the graduation coordinator, I'm responsible for raising money to help cover the cost of graduation. This year's cost for graduation is approximately $6,500. This cost covers the World of Crescent Center venue, live streaming the event so that family and friends can celebrate this important milestone, and replacing our decades-old white honor, high honor stools that have become stained in this color. I would like to use a portion of the donations to replace them with red stools that would hold up better, last longer, and most importantly, give students that are a 3.5 plus grade point average the recognition they deserve. So those are some of the things that they're asking for donations to fund.
How's that, what's the answer?
Education, of course, community education, sounds like something that would be public purpose. We're talking about something very specific, though, and it's the city that's not typically required to provide educational services, so I just want to find a statute or something that I could tag it to, so I can look. It'll just take me, you know, I can take a look tomorrow and I can, I can find out to let the council know.
Well, if we can direct staff, if Andrew doesn't find a problem with it, to go ahead and do the $250 donation?
So we need a motion from someone to donate $250 based on Andrew's verification that it's okay to do so.
So I, I made that motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it our second?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a hand raised in Zoom, so I believe I have someone who wants to make public comment on this.
Okay.
Dominic, if you can hear me, you need to unmute yourself.
How about now?
Okay, I got you.
All right, Dominic, 19860, southwest 93rd lane, Danone Rainbow Springs community. I apologize for being kind of out of order. The discussion about the Little League, I would.
Dominic, please speak up just a little bit.
Can you hear me?
Speak up just a little bit, I could hear you really good at first, but not so much now.
How about now? Okay, one thing about the Little League, there are some suggestions getting thrown out there, and I wanted to jump in there, but I've been having issues tonight. I think it'd be also good, I'd recommend, I'm just going to recommend this, have Mr. Gissy throw out the first pitch at, for the start of the season. That would be a good idea, too. That's all, I'm, I apologize for being out of order. And the high school deal, I'd go with it. That's it.
He said he, he wanted to suggest that Mr. Gissy throw out the first pitch at the, I guess.
Little League opening.
The opening day at Little League, and that he supports the idea of the donation to the high schools. Good deal, thank you. Is that all, Dominic?
That's it, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Valentine's Day, Dominic.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Well, I love that idea, too, I guess the, the Little League would have to approve that, we can put that idea in their mind if they want to do that, but hey.
Troy, you could call Adam and ask him that.
Yes, ma'am. I have another comment.
Okay, you have another one? Okay, go for it.
So, so you have a motion?
Oh.
And a vote?
Okay.
About the high school thing?
Yes, about the high school. Yeah, we, we had to take public comment.
Well, I make a motion that we.
It's already been done.
Yeah, and you seconded it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any more public comment on the $250 donations to the high school? Okay, we are done.
All in favor?
All in favor? Post? No one's opposed, super good. Vice Mayor, you have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had one more, please go, yes.
Mr. Mayor, you remember when that meeting was at the Boys and Girls Club with FGU? Mr. Mayor, do you remember when that meeting was at the Boys and Girls Club with FGUA that accepted to sue? Do you remember when that was? Was it last year?
Yes, it's pushing, it's pushing a year right now.
Yeah.
It's pushing a year.
And then they were supposed to have another meeting in September, and it never happened, and nobody ever contacted them. So a citizen reached out to me. They're really a little bit upset. They kept calling. I think the man's name is Hugh or something. They kept calling him. I guess he's the one that conducted the meeting, but anyway, I just wanted to make a comment that the citizens are very upset. They never heard from anybody, but just last week, they did get in touch with someone at FGUA, and, and then I understand it's been mentioned to Kathy Bryant, so, because they never got back with them.
So the issue is trying to get a meeting again?
Yeah, they're supposed to have a meeting. They're going to try to schedule a meeting in late March, I was told. And then I also heard the money was, there was not enough money available, but nobody ever got in touch with them, told them nothing, so I just thought it was great, though.
We just met with John Worrell just a few days ago. Myself, Troy, and Mandy, and we actually asked about that.
Oh, okay.
And he said the project was going forward, and the people that were in the Chatmire area were now coming around and very supportive of it, where before they weren't. I, I was at that meeting, and I heard how many people complained about it. But he didn't give us any real specifics, but he just kind of made us, made us believe, unless Mandy or Troy thinks differently, he made me think that this thing was moving in the right direction.
They just never had another meeting, and nobody contacted them. And the citizen said that she made several calls, and there was no, there was no return calls. So finally, somebody did, I have the, the text message. They did talk to somebody, and I think Kathy Bryant is supposed to be checking on it now.
Okay. He did indicate, John Worrell did indicate that the project was moving forward, and that there was more people out there now that are being, becoming more receptive to the idea, participating. But he didn't get into a whole lot of the details and specifics on it. So I'll follow up with him tomorrow and see if they've got another meeting scheduled, or if he knows about these calls or requests of calls that have been coming in. Because if not, he can get in touch with their PR and find out who's not returning the call, or find out who's wanting a response.
Okay. Someone spoke with a Rob and a Teresa Butler, the new project manager. They talked about 30 minutes, they said.
Well, and if you get a chance tomorrow, just email me or text me those names, and I'll mention them to John to make sure that they're following through with the request of the citizens. So a request is an eye-to-eye, face-to-face meeting with FGUA, like they did before?
Never had the one in September.
Troy, will you look into that? Absolutely. Thank you. As you, as you know, Mr. Mayor, John and I talk on a regular basis, probably once every two or three days. Three days pass, and we haven't called each other, then something's going wrong.
It's been a while. I've spoken to him, but it was about something else, but I haven't talked to him in a while.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So do we have a handout?
Yes.
This is something that I would normally put as a presentation, a promise. I'll keep it short, but it's something that has just happened, and it is very important to the council. Something that is on the Marion County Commission meeting Thursday. Mandy picked up on it when she looked at the agenda. We weren't fully aware. Mandy, why don't you pull, pull it up on the video, too, so?
Yeah, I read this, I read this on email. Yeah. I actually wanted to say, I like the container bathroom.
So here, here's where it is. Thursday on the agenda, Jim Couillard is going to make a presentation, and this is basically his presentation. It's public record, so we're not getting in front of everybody, anybody. Apparently, this council offering a contribution to the restroom, the $23,400, has sparked some interest with the county commissioners. So they are now wanting to talk about the restroom. They haven't wanted to talk about it for a long time. So congratulations to this council for making that offer. With that said, though, we will go through, you know, through this and go over what is going to be recommended. And what's being recommended is a lot different than the plans that we spent $18,000 for. Jan, it's my understanding, we spent $18,000 for those original plans.
Correct.
All right. Let's just walk through this. Won't take long, but this is real important. I'm going to this meeting. First page, just as basically an introduction, the front page. The second gives a little information. The park was acquired in 208. Operated by Marion County. As we know, it's managed by the City of Dan Allen. And we know all about the management plan. The bottom of page two is just a outline of the park. So you go to page three. This is currently our restroom for Blue Run Park. Three unisex portable bathrooms, one of them is ADA, holding tank of 60 gallons, freshwater capacity, blah, blah, has no water fountain. Quite surprisingly, for $3,300 a year, that's what it costs in the county to have those three there.
My mama. Oh, my God.
Yeah, that's not a lot of money, that. So if you look at the bottom of this, it's awful small, but we do have the detailed drawings. We had a real nice restroom design. It had rock around it, had a porch. It was really nice. The issue is, like with all things in construction, the prices have doubled or tripled. So where the county is right now is budgetarily making a commitment to spend. The original design, when you include the plumbing with Hugle and everything, is $650,000. $200,000 to $250,000 is just for the plumbing for all of these. That's a big expense. So that's the original design. Then if you go to the back page of that, value engineering, value engineering at the bottom is the original design, but they eliminate some of the goodies, the porch, storage, skylights. So it's kind of like buying a car with some of the options taken off of it. So the, these are the proposed systems. One is the original design. The second one is the value engineering. This is all going to be presented Thursday. Then you go to the next page where it says standard park bathrooms. This is very similar to what we have at Ernie Mills, what we have at City Beach. Have a concrete block bathroom with one toilet, one sink, for men and women, a water fountain, skylight. But here you get into, and I didn't say before, the original design right now is estimated with the plumbing to cost $673,000. The value engineered design knocks about $50,000 off of it. It'd be $625,000. When you go with the standard bathroom, which is similar to what we have at the boat ramp in City Beach, it's $440,000. Keep in mind, of that, $200,000 to $250,000 is plumbing. The simple bathroom design, which is on the bottom, changes this to three single ADA accessible restrooms, block with water, water fountains. So it knocks it down to $25,000. Okay, keep going with me. This is all worth it, because this is what they're going to be considering, and this impacts Blue Run Park forever. Then there's the precast model. This is similar to when we talked about our modular building, where they put it together in a factory, concrete, whatever, and they come like an erector set. They put it into place. So this one has three single bathrooms, concrete, assembled on site, leveled base. The water fountain is not included. This is, would cost $302,000. Then you go to the final one, which is kind of like a, the cheapest one that they have. It's called the shipping container bathroom. I believe this is something that's almost like a mobile home. This is one that's just pulled in and?
Shipping container.
Yeah. So it has four single unisex with sinks, drains, utility room, whatever. So that's it, $238,000. Jim has texted me as we're at this council meeting, and another option he has, he is going to include that wasn't on this, is the idea of have a portable that's pulled up with a trailer, like what you would?
Those are nice. If, if it's the nice one. They had them at SCAD. Those are super nice.
It's like a, it's like a bathroom that you pull in like on a trailer, a truck, and pull it in, park it, and set up, and it's just, it's like you're buying a horse trailer.
And, and, and I mean, and they have like, some of them I've seen have like chandeliers. I mean, they are like, if they get the right one, they're really nice.
The chandelier bathroom.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I don't think they'd have that there, but.
That one would cost, because there's no plumbing or whatever, that one would cost somewhere around $90,000 or $100,000.
But that's per year, right?
Okay, so. Buy the unit, and it's serviceable, just like your porta potties. It'd be about a $2,000, $3,000 a year. Serviceable. Yeah, so it's, yeah.
Never mind.
So. So what he's going to recommend right now, what he's going to recommend is the precast one. It's the one that has the three restrooms. They're unisex. Might have nothing more than a toilet. There's no water fountain. Estimated cost, $302,000 with the, with the plumbing.
So what the first one was, the original cost was?
And so keep in mind that no matter what they do, it's $200,000 to $250,000 when you, when you commit. So now you got to ask, what is the best thing for the amount above that? If we're going to spend $200,000 or $250,000 for a bathroom, do we want a precast model, or do we want a shipping container model? The main expense on those is in the plumbing. So where we're at right now is showing appreciation to the county for putting us back up to play, but at the same time, giving inputs what we would like in our park. The agreement that we have with the county is they are obligated to put the restroom in, and they're supposed to give a restroom that's equal or near equal to what's in their other parks. I asked Jim about that. I says, "Where else do you have a precast restroom?" He says, "Well, we haven't ever had one before, but we have..."
I have a question on that.
Two to go in a building, yes.
Yeah, there, there's no dimensions on how big those bathroom stalls are. I'm looking at this photo. I see a very narrow doorway. Okay, what does that mean? You walk in, you can just go out, turn around, and sit on the seat? Shipping container bathroom. Compare the size of the doors, the width of the doors.
Well, that would all come out. You're right. So here, here's where, here's where we're at on this. The reason that the county initiated this is we put in some skin in the game. And they're seemingly not wanting to commit to a nicer bathroom, particularly one that was part of our original plan. So we can sit back and do a couple of things. We could say, okay, if the best you can do is the modular one, sure beats the porta potties. The advantage to it is the plumbing's there, and the plumbing remains. If in the future, the city wanted to upgrade, you wouldn't have to pay the $200,000, $250,000 upgrade it's in. But when would the city be able to afford that and do that? One of the things we can, we can do, the three things we can do is say, hey, whatever you do, that's an improvement. Thank you. Second thing we can do is say, what you're planning isn't quite what we were hoping. We really, we do have $50,000 now dedicated to it, our original $30,000 and the $23,400 that we committed. So we now have money in the game, and we want to have something to say about the bathroom that's going to be there. Or if we wanted to go for it and, and see if the county would look at the best bathroom or a much better bathroom, we could consider again going to them and saying, listen, we realize the expenses and whatever, we're willing out of some other fund to come up with some extra money if you will consider going with a better bathroom. I have a feeling, I don't know what that number would be. I have a feeling the county might say, well, if you guys are willing to come up with X amount of dollars, maybe we can give you some. Keep in mind that this, this park is our signature park. Make no doubt about it, when people think of Dan Allen, they think of Blue Run Park. That's one of the first things they see when they come into the city. So when you come into that parking lot and enter that park, as we all do, Ms. Williams, and I do, you see a nice bathroom there. It's, has stone around it, looks really sharp. We've seen bathrooms that are like that. It just says hello, welcome to Blue Run Park. To me, to undershoot in a park that's that popular and is going to remain popular and become more popular with this pre-model here, right, right here, it's, it's understating the beauty of this park.
Well, the picture on the other side, though, the precast one that he says he's recommending, though it has rock on the side of it, so that's what you don't, you don't know. So, I mean, I, I mean, and I, because I was going to call Jim the other day, and I couldn't get his number. I didn't have it on my phone, so. I mean, I like the look of the container, and I just think it's neat-looking, like with the wood. I don't know if that's exactly what we get. So really, I mean, I don't like the one, I mean, I'm sure the first one that we originally wanted, but that's way too much money, $600. The park standard bathroom, that's ugly. I don't want that one. If the precast model has like what you're, like, the one that's hanging up and being suspended, that's not that bad. It has, you know, the wood look, you know, the rock on the bottom. That doesn't look bad, and the doors aren't as puny, because otherwise, if it looks like that, no, thank you. We appreciate your assistance, but we, you know. So I think we need to know what it looks like before we can actually even make a recommendation. I mean, at first, the thought of the travel ones that you see, like, like I've seen at SCAD at their Equestrian Center, but if you're having to maintain it, let's not make it cheap by having a porta potty there. You know, that's just a biz kind of thing. But if the, if the precast model is nice, like, more like the one that's dangling in the air, that's fine. That one I don't mind as bad. I mean, you can see it better right there. It's a little bit wider.
And Ms. Smith?
Yeah, that one looks, I mean, that looks nice, not the blue everything.
Jan, your, your presentation really caught my attention, because when you were talking about that $300,000 that we have set off to the side, sitting there for the bike trail, not knowing when and if that bike trail would ever be used. Sliding some of that money out of there and maybe making this a little bit more attractive would be very interesting. I mean, think about it, if we're going to try to?
But, but you have to listen to which, we have a, a contract with the county already to obligate this fund. We just can't take those funds out. We'd have to go to the county to ask, and that's where Andrew would come into play.
Yeah, it would have to be coordinated with the county, and we'd have to formulate another plan on how to replenish those funds. So you free up $100,000, okay, just example, you free up $100,000.
Say you free $100,000 and you approach the county, or?
Right.
We might have talked to you about doing that.
Then maybe we extend our agreement with the county. We do $50,000 next year, $50,000 the year after. So you're extending it out beyond the seven years, but it could be?
There's a good chance.
It could be done. I don't, let's put it this way, I don't see how it, it wouldn't be done. Anything can happen. But as of right now, we could do it.
Here's where I'm at, Vice Mayor is well aware of. Something that's critical, it's widening 41 from Walmart up to 40 or past, has been postponed by FDOD for five years. So the chances of this getting priority over something like that in the next five years, I mean, I, I would be amazed if the bike trail would be given a go. So I'm, I'm looking at this money that we have set aside for this bike trail. Three years out would be optimistic. Five years out would probably be more probable. We're going to focus right now, I think, on putting money into pedestrian part of the bridge. And my feelings is that's going to be okay. You've got your cutter to pie for a while, so be happy with that. And we'll get back to the other stuff later. Because it seems to me like you're focusing on the pedestrian bridge, trying to create a way to walk over that bridge safely. It's just my estimation. So we already, we already have that money set off to the side. It's just, it's just an idea to put a little incentive in the county to do right by this park. This is a special park. It's on the Rainbow River. This isn't a park that's sitting out in the middle of nowhere. Just my thoughts. Yes, Ms. Kenny?
Well, I think it's a, a real disappointment to see something like this. As long as we have waited and as hard as we have worked in order to protect our relationship with Marion County and also to secure the use for the KP hole. And so it's not just our people who will be served by this, but it will be people who are, will be using the KP hole park and coming down this way will be used it. So this is Marion County. This is, we're part of Marion County. If this is what they think of Dunellen, then to me, it's a slap in the face.
It does appear like we get a hand me down somewhat.
Well, it, it's pitiful. This is pitiful. And I'd rather they do nothing than do any of these things because it will cheapen it.
You're talking about the pre, precast and?
That's right. I don't, I, I just think it's unbelievable. And I can't imagine Kathy Bryant, I would think that she would be hurt by this. I would hope so because she represents us and she knows how important it is to us.
Well, let me ask you something that's a little sensitive for women. What do you think about using a restroom that men are also using?
Well, I think the whole thing is just, you know what I think and I'm trying to be very polite.
I pose that to my wife Laura. She says, for, for me to sit on that seat after men have been.
And I don't know who else has seen it. I mean, they've given it to you evidently. I don't know.
It was in our email.
It was in our email. So has the Rainbow River Conserva- Conservation, the, the, has the RRC had an opportunity to see?
I, I let them know that this was going to be on the agenda and gave them.
So, so yeah, so you know.
It's all public information. No one's hidden inside tracker.
Right, but, but there are certain people who are definitely more invested in terms of what they have done with volunteers and with bringing tourism into this area and to protect the river itself. And they really feel, I think strongly that they have built relationships with the county. And I think it's time for the county to acknowledge their relationship. They've been work, they've worked very, very hard.
Ms. Williams? I'm really interested in your opinion because you out of, everybody in the council uses that park 10 times more than all of us.
I do, I use it a lot. And there has been some times where I didn't have a choice but to go to these porta potties, hoping that something would not bite. I'm telling the truth. I just, I don't, I don't, I don't understand a lot, but there needs to be some of this restroom.
Are you afraid of a reptile, insect or a mammal? All of the both?
I mean, I have met people on that trail that have come like from St. Augustine and other places, and it's embarrassing. We don't have a nice restroom.
No, that's a terrible.
I've met quite a few people.
Actually, the precast, if you look at it, it's, it's basically a porta potty.
The hanging one, the dangling one?
That looks nice.
Any of these would be better than those porta potties.
The one to the left on the top. That's basically three porta potties side by side.
Well, that's what that is up there hanging, the precast up there.
But they're basically the same, huh?
That is the same, yes, ma'am.
But like Jan said, hopefully the doors, if you like, everybody would look.
And those look wider than whatever that is. Well, Mr. Mayor, I think you can tell them that we prefer our, our first option that we had. Hate that one. I'll just go ahead and tell you now, that one's just ugly. That's, that's a nice tilt.
Plus it only has one restroom for males compared to females.
Females are always used to waiting in line. I don't know how many. But, okay, so you got your marching order.
So what, as far as saying to them, we may be willing to step up to the plate.
Well, well, let me ask you this. And, and I'm, again, I'm trying to be.
I don't want them to say, well, if you guys don't want it, we can sit on this another two or three.
Well, well, be very quickly, very quickly. Because I know there are some people, I mean, I just got a text from my husband saying Cupid is waiting. So let's pop it. But real quick. Well, let's, let's get this over with. But we maybe should find out how much money the KP hole has brought in in revenues over the last five years.
900,000 a year.
Okay, 900,000 a year. And they need 600,000. So 450. Let's just go crazy. Let's go, half of it's 450. So maybe they can go ahead and do the 600,000 ones. If they've made that much money off of the county, off of this city and, and their KP hole people all vote down to us. Lovingly, we request that information.
I'm raising the rates right here.
Well, okay. So, so you have your.
Ms. Ms. coverage?
I think that if you look at the revenue of the KP hole and the fact that we are a partner with the KP hole in them gaining that revenue, we need to pump up the ante for what Blue Run Park needs.
Just to what they had originally planned. With, I mean, and I get that there can be some modifications. We don't need a skylight, for goodness sake.
Yeah, I got you.
And a big porch, eh, it'd be nice, but we don't need the big porch.
And keep in mind, we have already spent 18,000 dollars for the design that they have.
And I'd prefer us not to give out any more money than they've made a little bit more money. So, okay, so next.
Okay, so I, ooh, I got, I gotta handle this one delicately. Okay.
Have fun.
Wish me well Thursday.
You get more with sugar than you do with vinegar.
All right, that's the only thing I wanted to say. I think everybody's had a chance for comments. We still have staff reports, so hang in there. I know it is Valentine's Day. Keep, remind yourself, we did start a half an hour late. So we actually are doing quite well. Troy, your report?
Real quick, council, this weekend we had the volunteer job together in partnership with the RRC and redid all the park benches out at Blue Run Park. The mayor joined us out there and, and I think a total of 19 people showed up. Took about three and a half hours, start to finish. So we had a great day, great food for lunch afterwards. So other than that, my report's the same as it was the last Wednesday.
I saw the wet paint sometimes.
Right?
I need to sell a million dollar house, but I'll make it for other reasons.
Did you sell it?
No, I said I couldn't. Had other stuff come up.
Come on, Troy, you said at the workshop, you said, I'm going to cut back the workshop because I got a lot for you to.
No, I gave you everything at the last meeting. The road, the, the road update and plans.
All right, if you insist. Georgina?
Well, all I have to say is that code enforcement keeps working on a reactive basis with one employee part-time. He goes out and tries to clean up as much as he can. He did today, clean out a bunch of signs that were on the right of way. But the ones that are on private property, there's only so much you can do. He's reaching out to everybody, doing his due diligence. And that's all we can do for now. Yes, ma'am.
Are we making any progress, Mandy? Fine, I need someone to take Jeanette's place.
I tried interviewing somebody.
What we can do to.
We listed it with Career Source today, which is one other avenue that we chose to use. We've advertised it, it's on the website. We've sent it out to you through a couple of different groups that parks and.
Florida League of Cities.
Members of. And members of. And we received one application and within a couple of days, they rescinded it because they had some sort of personal emergency. And so that was that one pulled out. And then we met with a staffing agency today. And just for, so they wanted to come get a better idea of what we were looking for. They sent someone already that didn't really fit our need. So rather than sending someone else before they, you know, came over and really got a feel for us, talked to Georgina, talked to me. So she can, you know, be a lot more particular in who she sends. And I hope that it might work out.
And I talked to Rob Bombs and just because they're still looking for somebody for the last year and a half for two positions over there. And I said, hey, if you don't get anybody that suits Jels, need to throw them over to us. And I even met with somebody the other day, Saturday at lunch. A friend brought his new girlfriend and she was a civil engineer. And I said, hey, I know you're not the right one for it, but if you know anybody that's looking to downsize or do whatever, please, you know, so word of mouth is always the best.
So Georgina, you're, you are taking a course, right?
I am taking three courses.
Three of them? So get the word out. Some of the students out there, this would be a.
He's on Zoom.
What is that job?
Great way, a great starting point out of town.
Yeah. I agree. I can certainly do that.
A lot, a lot of students.
And we also have a contact with the county within their HR that was willing to help, so we'll.
One of the serious things about graduating from college is when you're about two months out, you realize you don't have a job waiting for you and mom and daddy letting you back in the house. So let, let those young people know that. Maybe we can get someone over.
What's that job title?
Did you have anything else, Georgina?
No, that'd be all. Thank you.
I just wonder, what's that job title?
What's the job title, Georgina?
Planning assistant.
Planning assistant? Where can we find the job description?
It's on the website. We have it.
Okay, planning, okay.
I can send it to you if you want.
Now let's get this done. We just don't want to put you through what Mandy and everybody else has gone through previously.
They don't go on.
All right, Chief, how are you, chief?
Doing good.
Thank you.
What I have is a MOU agreement between the City of Dunellen and the State Attorney for the Fifth Circuit. And this deals with the state attorney only prosecutes Florida state statutes. So in order for him to prosecute our ordinances, we need to have an agreement with him. And that's what this is about. And I'd like for the mayor to sign it. And basically, it's written in legal terms, but I will try and interpret it. And basically, that's what it says, that he will, or fee prosecute any criminal cases or ordinances. And we got to have this with him. Otherwise, we have to go to the magistrate, which is very, very expensive. So.
All right, my only question is, I see that the fee was $50 per hour?
Yep.
So do we make enough on our fee, on our fines to pay that? Or does that?
There's a difference. There's only $50, but that's not a criminal case. Our $50 fines are not criminal.
No, I'm saying ordinances. If they's having to charge or don't we charge somebody for an ordinance if they violate an ordinance?
No, that's, that's not criminal.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I got, sorry, I, I'm here.
What do, what do we need to do, chief?
Need to get you to sign it.
Something that council.
And that's, and Amanda to sign it and send it to Mr. Bill Blatson.
I have a question.
It would have to be something that needs to be looked at, you know, by somebody other than you.
Andrew drafted it. Oh, he knows it.
It's, it's a standard form in the Fifth. And I made some modifications to it, updated where there were some statutory, just outdated citations. So corrections are there. It's, it's a good agreement.
Ms. Kenny?
Yes. When we have the codes that we have in our municipal code at this point, or which would be those things that have been interpreted from anything that we have in terms of our comprehensive plan and our districts and, and where we use the language of magistrate. Does that have to be changed then when you go in? Or if you violate our codes, that's not considered criminal? Is that what we're seeing? So if you, you can violate a code and you can do something against the law, but it is not criminal? Is that what we're seeing?
No, right. Most of our violations are not criminal. They are, trying to think of the word, not criminal. They're just mandatory that you pay the fine. If you don't pay the fine, you go to court and the judge hears that. And he either finds you guilty or not guilty. But if you're charged with a criminal violation under our code, then it's the, we have to be represented by the state or a magistrate. And the magistrate is very, very expensive.
I understand that, you know, I understand that. But even at that, if we're talking about code violations and go to the magistrate, we'll still be using that as, that will still be a requirement. That will still be on our table.
Right.
On our books. I just don't know where the line is between breaking the law and being criminal. I guess bang, bang, you're dead, you're a criminal. If you're doing, if you're, what's the difference?
It's a non-moving violation, just like getting a citation if you're speeding.
Jaywalking.
Jaywalking or whatever. It's a non-criminal violation. Like all the ordinances that we have for Blue Run Park, most of them is for non-criminal violations.
So do we have something in our codes that identifies things as being non-criminal?
It'd be criminal if it's, if you can go to jail, have jail time for it.
Yes.
If there's some sort of a penal type of thing, not just a fine. That's the distinction.
Now, some of the ordinances.
Maybe we could have a line in there for us to say that.
It would. You have to identify it as criminal in order for it to be criminal.
Yeah, some of the ordinances can go to criminal. In other words, if you get a violation and it's a code violation, it's an ordinance violation. And if they don't go to court, don't show up to court, then they can issue a warrant for them. And then it's, becomes criminal. And that's where the state attorney would come in.
So we just need to make a motion to approve this?
Yes. And have the mayor sign it and amend it.
And we have to have public conversation, public response first before we do that?
We'd have to take a comment. A public comment on something they haven't seen.
We just. This is a walk-on, right, Mandy?
Yes. Yes, we just, yeah, chief just did this to me today.
And all those new ordinances that we just did for Blue Run Park that started in April, this would cover this, correct?
It would if there's, if they turn it criminal. That's the reason for this.
Okay, we have a motion? For me to sign this?
I summon that you, mayor, you have to sign this.
What's the document called, chief?
I'm sorry?
Oh, ordinance, the agreement between the City of Dunellen, Florida and the State of Florida Office of the State Attorney from the Fifth Judicial Circuit of Florida to reimburse the state for the cost of state attorney prosecution. Certain criminal violations of the City of Dunellen's Code of Ordinances is my motion.
We have a second.
You do have to have public comment.
I thought we just did. I thought we just did. We asked for public comment.
Nobody's there.
All right, let's just make sure it's already public comment.
No one on Zoom has their hand raised.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. To this, by the way, Mayor, we have a second.
I'll say.
Okay, for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Unanimous. Okay, Chief.
It wasn't unanimous.
Uh.
You're gonna mention.
It'll take about an hour, but I'll have.
You're gonna mention about this, how you can prevent your valuables from being stolen in a park.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor. There's, they had three burglaries at KP Hole, where they smashed the window out of a car and took some valuables out of there. And they also had one burglary at Blue Run Park where they smashed the window and took some valuables out of there. The, as the mayor said, we talked about this, and most people who go to a swimming area or to a place like that, they put their valuables under the seat of the car, or in the glove compartment, or somewhere in the passenger, inside the passenger's part of the vehicle. And that's what they see. If you really want your valuables to be safe, put them in the trunk. It's hard to break into your trunk. Most of the time, you gotta have a crowbar or something like that. So, the thieves are, understand that when you're out at a park or something, if you're gonna leave valuables, you may put them under the seat, may put them in the glove compartment, and they're gonna break your window out because that's where they think they're gonna find valuables, and they do. So, if you really wanna keep them safe, put them in the trunk.
And that happened to one of my nieces when she was taking swimming lessons at C R. She left her purse in view. Smashed the window, smashed the window.
So, thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay, Chief, got it.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, sir?
Not, I don't wanna. Get murdered over.
Mandy, do you have anything to add?
I have just a couple of updates. The Shake Shelter RFP that we've talked about recently, we're scheduled to get responses back by February twenty-fourth on that. The, I got the CRA notice of intent published. The soonest I could get it in any of the newspapers was three sixteen. So, the thirty days will start on the sixteenth and go out until March sixteenth. Marion County is having Marion County Day on March twenty-sixth. It's from ten to two at the McPherson Complex, if you wanna jot that date down. We did this two years ago. The city set up a tent there. And so, if any of you would like to, we'll create a schedule for people to come and man the tent and work the, as volunteer.
Welcome.
Yeah. So, it was fun. And it's a nice, you know, thing where they bring the kids out, and have a lot of activities and things like that. So, just wanna make y'all aware of that, plenty of advance notice, March twenty-sixth. And FGUA, we're repairing a water main on William Street, North William Street tomorrow. They said that if the boil water notice is necessary, they'll be sending it to us. But the repairs are only affecting service to one customer right now. And that's all I have on that. I just know it's gonna be going on tomorrow, near, at Anderson's.
Oh, okay.
So, if anybody sees them out there working that, repairing a water main. And that's all I have.
Okay. Is there anyone else on staff that I forgot? Brenda, did you wanna say anything to us at all?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Brenda D R, Level one-one, six-six-one, Camp Drive. On the special meeting that you had for the police facility, has there been another scheduled special meeting called yet?
There hasn't been one called. Right now, we're in the process of advertising and having it out for sale.
Okay.
As was reported previously, we do have an offer.
No, I was talking about Mr. Shepherd's presentation. The conclusion for that, obviously, will change the direction that council will have to go. So, that was my inquiry.
Yeah, so your inquiry is, are we gonna have another meeting?
A special meeting because it became apparent that to raise to level four, we wouldn't, he said there wasn't a building in this town that would meet those codes or requirements. So, that the council at this point then would have to, his recommendation was to build an entirely new building. It could be up to that code.
Correct. Based on his report, there's not a building that I'm aware of. Maybe the post office or whatever, I can't say. But it appears that to bring a building to essential service standards, that the codes for that surpass any pre-existing building.
Right.
Which then puts us in a position that if we're gonna do this, we have to do it new. So, it really simplifies things. Would've been something that would've been nice to have known that a year and a half ago, right?
Exactly.
Uh, well, somehow, some way.
And just an observation, a little levity, sideline. I really appreciate your comments, Mrs. Kenny, with the county's proposals for those bathrooms. I was appalled when I saw the cost of those. So, two of those value designs would buy us a police station. That's just a comment.
Well, that, I mean, your point is, well served. You can see the expenses of something like that.
Yes.
So, you can see why the council is grappling with this. I mean, this is crazy. It's absolutely crazy what's going on up there.
Yeah.
And I think all of us are afraid to get involved with something that is spinning so wildly upward that we get halfway into something and we say, okay, what are we gonna do now?
Right.
It's, it's kind of, even the county, I think their reluctance to move forward on their projects is the same thing. A lot of times now, when you get quotes from construction, they basically can't honor the quote. They can just say, this is a ballpark figure, and we'll do the best we can. Please keep in mind that prices go up, you will have to pay them.
Yes.
You know? So, it's a tough environment.
Well, I just wanna thank all of you for your dedication and, you know, persistence. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you put in many hours in working with the county. So, hopefully we can get this through to all.
You look beautiful tonight, Brenda.
Oh, thank you.
Gotta go back.
Wait a second. We still have something very important here. Any, we covered, Andrew, there, you have a couple of things. I know I'm way the nickier from. Do you have anything to report to us?
No, I didn't have anything specific. What would you like to hear?
We're supposed to have put some time into coming up with some ideas how we're gonna implement the Blue Run Park ordinance, because we're trying to call a meeting between now and March meeting with the county to discuss that. We're also supposed to be looking at the ins and outs of charging fees for the boat ramp and parking. Oh, that's applicable.
Yeah, I don't have a report on any of those items. As far as, as far as enforcement of Blue Run Park, I will have some discussions with Chief regarding any questions that he may have on that. And as far as user fees and specifics, I have just legal information that I provided. I don't have anything additional beyond that at this point to state anything. I think the next step would be to, for staff to take a look at ultimately, you know, what, what these, what the effects of voters are and what they can be tied to. And then going from there, listing those out, and then evaluating what those costs are to come up with a fee. But as of right now, there's no legal work to do on that.
Okay, so staff should, Mandy?
And we're prepared to report back to you.
Report to us with your recommendations. And then as far as implementing, that's a combination of Chief, county, staff member. We talked about me being involved, just so I know what's going on. So, we really, with April first being vote day, we need to have that meeting, how to implement, actually before the March meeting. So, whatever we need to do in March, we can do it. So, we're prepared for April.
That's what they were gonna do at the workshop.
Right?
Well, y'all are talking about two different things right now. You talking about Blue Run Park or boat launch fees?
Talking about Blue Run Park, the implementation of the ordinance.
That was when we discussed at the workshop, that Chief, the meeting with Andrew, I don't know, I'm supposed to be involved in that.
Well, what I'm saying is, I'm planning to call a meeting before our March meeting. So, we're prepared to discuss this in front of council.
Okay.
We have to because we're looking at April first.
I thought staff would be able to do that, so. Well, we talked about this Wednesday.
Yeah.
Calling a special meeting of staff, involve in the county maybe, staff, and to discuss how to begin the enforcement.
Right. So, I'm just trying to clarify what, sometime between now and the next meeting, we need to have that meeting.
Right.
All right? All right. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait a second, Mandy.
I have a hand raising, too.
You got a what?
Were you taking a public comment now?
No, we've had public comment time.
Actually, council can vote over. So, someone wants to make a comment after the fact?
Please.
So.
Nighty night, that's what I say. Happy Valentine's.
Yeah, sorry.
We've made a motion to adjourn.
So, council says no.
Respectfully, no, thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn, second?
Somebody's second, because I'm leaving.
Okay, bye. Thank you. Thank you. Name is still here?
No, he's.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Mayor, do you want to sell all these stuff tonight or you won't be able to?
Sure.
Let's get it out in the way.
Get home, say to Andrew, enjoy your last Valentine's Day, but I'll shout out.
We all know.
That was evil.
I know it was evil.
Yeah.
There's going to be.
Suddenly, we will let you. We do.
I'm so smart. That's the property rights on that ordinance. Thank you, Governor Roger. Well, the other thing I'll have to, yes, the R B O's on me, trying to nail down what it is and what category it will tend to be.